Joining us, we are going to call to order the public hearing related to our proposed school budget for FY 2025. Just to give you a little example very quickly of how this is going to run, we're going to begin with public speak. This first part of our meeting tonight is a public hearing exclusively to do with this budget. So this first public speak session, we would ask that any comments anybody wishes to make would be in relation to that proposed budget and any sort of financial issues that go along with that. If you have other things to share after we conclude the public hearing, we'll be opening a regular session and we'll have a second public speak opportunity for anybody who has concerns outside of that purview. We're not going to set a strict time limit, but we're going to ask, clearly there's a lot of people who are invested and eager to share tonight, so we would just ask that you keep your comments to just a couple of minutes. If somebody's starting to run long, I'll signal you gently just to wrap things up so that all of the people in the room and joining us virtually will have an opportunity to share their thoughts this evening. We are going to roll call in. Ben Hershey?
Here.
Eric Gallett?
Here.
Megan Harvey?
Here.
Linda Markey?
Here.
Sam Hunter?
Here.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Laura Scott present. So we are going to begin with opening that public speak. We're going to take folks in public attendance first. If you want to form a line, come to the podium. You can introduce yourself and share your thoughts, and again, we just ask you keep it to a couple of minutes. Thank you so much.
Do you see how cute people are reading random letters?
Okay. Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I am asking you to vote for a level service budget. A level service budget is not a wish list or a luxury. It is a necessity. It is the only way to preserve the quality of education that our community values and expects. It is the only way to protect the investments that we have made in our schools with the construction of two state-of-the-art buildings. It is the only way to honor the hard work and dedication of our teachers, administrators, and staff who have gone above and beyond to support our students during and after COVID by adopting new modes of teaching and learning and supporting the social and emotional needs of our students and families. For the last 25 years, I've had the privilege of working with individuals who have devoted their careers to educating and supporting our students. And some of my former students work in this very municipal building. There are also police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and teachers. That's why I have to be really nice to my students because some of them now are my coworkers. My current students are the future of this city, and soon, maybe one of them will be elected to serve on a local governing body such as this one. You have an important vote tonight because you are funding the future of this city. Please pass a level service budget and a fair contract for our staff. Our students and staff deserve nothing less than to have the resources and support they need to continue to thrive and succeed. Thank you for your time and attention and for your service to this great city.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else present in the room tonight? Go ahead.
You're allowed to clap.
You're allowed to clap.
Just remember, they're supposed to do names and stuff, right?
I believe Sean did introduce himself. So just a reminder to everyone, just introduce yourself by name before you begin to speak. Thank you, Sam.
I'm Evan Zimer. I have three children in East Hampton. One no longer attends East Hampton, but the other two. My comments are going to wander a little off funding, but I do not think they can be addressed without funding. I know providing even funding for level services seems unaffordable, but the current services are not providing enough for our struggling students and our hard-working staff, especially in the elementary school. We choiced out a child on an IEP, realizing their well-being was more important than the civic duty to stay in East Hampton, and I'm learning that we're not the only ones. We, East Hampton, are becoming known in the Valley as one that is, the school is not supporting our neurodivergent students. And now our other child, a third grader, a high-achieving, rule-following student, is having her well-being, enjoyment of school, and confidence undermined by both other children's behavior and the consequences provided. So we, as parents, see both sides, the children with the behavior challenges and the children who do not have them. We appreciate the admin is trying, has hurt our concerns. Her classroom teacher's been great all year, but it's just not improving. It's clear to us that the lack of support for children with difficulties is impacting everybody. The staff are overwhelmed and can't meet children's needs. Behavioral challenges are so much that overwhelmed teachers have no tool other than collective punishment because they need to continue with their class. The behavior challenges are already hard enough on the students without those challenges, but the collective punishment makes it worse. We need enough trained staff to offer real support at recess, real support in classrooms in addition to the classroom teachers. We need enough staff to be able to offer small enough to intervene, and we need regulation support for kids who need breaks. We need staff to understand children do well when they can, and when they can't, they have unmet needs and lagging skills. They need someone with the time to say, hey, seems like you're having trouble settling down and doing your math. What's up? And not settling for the first answer, solving the problem, certainly not taking recess away from the class. We all do well when we can. Parents do well when they can. Support staff do well when they can. Teachers do well when they can. Building administrators do well when they can. School committee members do well when they can. Our schools have unmet needs and lagging skills that require support and help, and the services as they stand are not enough. When my children heard I was coming tonight, my youngest wrote you a letter. I would like to read it. Dear School Board, Group consequences are unfair. When some people don't do anything, they still get consequences. It feels discouraging, and it makes it so some people feel like that if they misbehave or not, they will still get in trouble. Also, if they get recess taken away when they didn't do anything, then it's infuriating and disappointing, and it is not fair. On her own, she also made an additional copy if any media is present.
Thank you, Evan. I love that.
Thank you. Amazing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leah Ewing. I'm a parent of a fourth grader and a sixth grader at MVS. I've been watching the budget process unfold, have attended some of the finance committee meetings, and I'm impressed by the work of our finance committee and the school business manager, Nick, who has been quick to respond to my parent questions, my concerns. He's been transparent, and they've all been professional. Thank you for your hard work and for agonizing over this process together. Still, the proposed funding is not doing enough to adequately meet the needs of our students and our teachers. While it is true that funding from the state and federal government hasn't met our expectations, this has been true for decades. As a city, it is our responsibility to provide enough resources to adequately fund each level of our school system so that we are meeting the needs of our students. This will not happen if our town officials and we, the taxpayers, continue to accept a self-imposed commitment to keep our school funded at 39% of our overall budget, a noticeable 10% lower on average than surrounding towns. It's not good. While serving on school council at MVS, I've become aware of way too many ways our current budget impairs our abilities to meet the basic legal requirements set forth by DESI, especially in the areas of our already struggling special education department and especially in regards to how we have organized academic instruction. I'm going to talk about the middle school because there are other parents here to talk about the elementary school. In my household, I'm hearing from two students who are struggling in stacked, quote, stacked classroom settings, where the numbers of IEPs and 504 service needs have overwhelmed the teachers' abilities to fully deliver all aspects of the grade-level curriculum in a way that truly differentiates and is not distracting to my kids. I don't want to feel like the only way to get my kids an education differentiated at their level is to choice out of this town, and I keep bringing this up, and there are no solutions that are viable. It's very frustrating. Furthermore, our middle school has not updated its digital literacy curriculum or science, technology, and engineering standards to comply with those laid out by the state years and years ago. In STE, it's 2016, and that's the law, so we're not in compliance with the law. Our middle school also lacks a curriculum map to ensure that all students equitably receive basic exposure to areas now mandated by state benchmarks. We're sending them into tests that they haven't gotten any background in. It's really disappointing. I'm proud of what our teachers are doing with what you have. Please don't hear me incorrectly. I really am, every one of you. But this isn't enough, and our town needs to do better. I don't know what needs to change, but the way we're approaching this needs to change. That 38% needs to come up. We need ideas from you guys, from anyone. Bottom line, this is not acceptable, and the district will lose more parents like me who really care and keep coming back here to fight for this stuff. We'll also lose really good teachers who are tired of dealing with too much. Thank you for listening. I know, I'm not preaching to you, I know you know this, but this is my honest feedback.
Thank you, Leah.
My name is Kira Henninger, and I'm a parent of two fifth graders at Mountain View School. Our schools have been chronically underfunded for years with an average budget increase of 1.65% prior to FY '23. The '23 and '24 budgets included higher increases thanks to the school committee superintendent, mayor, and city council, but it just hasn't been enough to recoup the losses and cuts made to necessary teacher and staff positions, as well as cuts in basic services for our students each year. We do not have any world language or STEAM offerings at our middle school. Post-pandemic, school-aged children and adolescents have been diagnosed with anxiety and depression at much higher rates. Increased school refusal has led to chronic absenteeism, which was presented to you recently as part of the High School School Improvement Plan. Poor academic achievement scores are higher than ever, leading to more students qualifying for special education services, which was also recently shared with you by our curriculum director. I urge you to ask for a review of the current IEP service grids and identify whether the current special education teachers, paraprofessionals, and related service providers are at adequate staffing levels to meet these legally obligated services. This review was recently requested by a school committee member in North Hampton, and the proposed budget was adjusted as the proposed cuts eliminated positions that were needed to provide these services. We need more than level services. We need additional teachers and paraprofessionals to support students who are struggling the most. If you do not put forth a budget to address the increasing needs of our students, all students will suffer, but the students that will suffer the most are those in the most vulnerable populations. I have participated in enough of the recent school committee meetings to know that I'm preaching to the choir. I know that you agree with me about the needs we have as a school district and that you want to provide the students in East Hampton an education that is equitable to surrounding communities. I also know you want to work with the union in negotiations to provide adequate pay to the people that support our students and give so much of themselves each day. I can urge you to make these decisions, but ultimately, it is your responsibility to provide enough staff and resources in order to successfully implement the mission statement and goals and objectives of the East Hampton School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Anyone else in the room where we can start? If you want to raise your hand virtually, and Megan can call you out because I can't see her screen. I made it dark so I can keep my battery alive. I don't see any hands as of now. I see a hand. Okay. We have Megan Davis. I believe you can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Megan Davis. I am a parent of two kiddos at East Hampton Public Schools. I also teach in a middle school in a different district. And I just, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing. I want to echo what you've heard from other parents. It is really hard to explain just how much need there is in our schools right now academically, socially, emotionally, and the job that teachers are being asked to do is so far beyond what they were doing 20 years ago. Teachers are providing full-on social-emotional support while still being held accountable for teaching their academic subjects at a level of rigor for students to pass their mandated tests, and also while differentiating for students with different academic, social, emotional, behavioral needs. And as the previous speaker just mentioned, our students are coming in with a lot more emotional needs in the last few years than they've had. And so, I, you know, I'm just here to be part of that parent body of East Hampton saying to you, the school committee, that you have the parents of this town's backing to ask for what our schools need. We need more than a level service budget, but we certainly need no less than a level service budget. We need the teachers to be compensated for the work that they're doing and to retain the teachers that we have because teachers are leaving this profession due to the fact that they're under-resourced and are given, they're given a job that's impossible to do when a building is understaffed. So I'm begging, pleading for a budget that staffs are building, a way that we're able to support the students and provide the resources that teachers need in order to do their job well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan. Margaret, I think you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself.
She's back.
Oh, she's back.
There she is.
Can you unmute yourself, Margaret? Yeah, perfect.
Yes, I am so eager to be here that I've come on 14 different screens. Something collapsed, so anyway, I'm here. My name is Margaret Betts. I have been in this district for 17 years, and I want to say that I feel like, though I couldn't agree more, that schools should never have to beg for money the way that schools have to beg for money. You know, since my entire childhood and beyond, there's always been this idea that schools have to have bake sales while we make more and more jet airplanes. So we know that there's always been that gap, but I've never felt as optimistic about a school committee as I do right now and about the ability for the school committee to understand and respond to the needs that we have in our, in our town. And I absolutely agree, there is more that is needed. But I am so grateful that we have a level service budget to present tonight, and I deeply support that, as well as I know that the school committee and the union want to see a fair contract. I'm excited for that process as well. I feel very respected right now in my profession and in the work that I'm doing, and I just want to thank the school committee for trying to find a way in the midst of this, the number of budget cuts that are being asked in cities all around us, that we are, this year, not being asked to make cuts, and we'll be able to fully fund at level the level service needs if this budget is passed. But again, I agree with everyone who says, and we need more, because I think we all know that we do. So thank you very much for the hard work that you've done on this budget, and I am enthusiastic and hoping that it passes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Any other hands as of yet? We're going to call one more time to see if anyone in attendance or attending virtually has an interest in sharing your thoughts. We're going to give that about one more minute just to make sure we don't... We do have one from home. Elise, you should be able to unmute. Elise, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I can, and I apologize. I have a timer that's going to go off in a minute, I think. So I will try to stop it if it goes off in the middle of my comment. Okay, thank you to everybody here listening. I want to strongly urge this group to increase funding for our schools at a percentage that will match or even exceed the percentage spent on education by neighboring districts and fully support students, staff, administrators, and families. It's clear from anecdotes told to me by my own children, in addition to those I've heard from fellow parents and caregivers, that the overall social-emotional culture, communication, and educational and extracurricular opportunities within the district have declined. And whether this is due to trauma caused by COVID, the merging of our schools into the Mountain View building, teacher overwhelm, or a combination of all these things, other things I haven't mentioned, just underfunding our schools is beyond counterproductive. I have been a fierce advocate for our schools over the years because I believe in the concept of public school education, ideally acting as the great equalizer it was designed to be. And when my children first started their academic journey here in East Hampton, I was enthusiastic about their experiences here, a vocal advocate for the schools, but it has been disheartening lately just considering some of the experiences that I have had. I'm specifically going to talk to some middle school experiences. I am, for the very first time, considering choicing at least one child, my middle school child, into another district, and I need to emphasize how deeply school choice goes against my ethical and moral compass. I've never felt so disheartened about the possibility of a decision. But the way everything relates back to funding is just the lack of opportunities and resources that we're offering students compared to neighboring districts, including strong arts programs at the middle school, specifically theater, foreign language offerings, adequate training and oversight for staff, and adapted or differentiated instruction. That is that timer. Hold on. So adaptive and differentiated instructions, such as universal design for learning methodologies, adequate staffing, training to help navigate the social-emotional needs of students, after-school offerings for our older students. I used to be a middle school science teacher, and just one thing that happened recently as I was telling my middle schooler about the science activities that I used to do with my students, and she said, you had your students do activities? She was flabbergasted about the idea of doing labs, things like that, and just the idea that that was available to students in other districts was confounding to her. If there's not funding for the basics expected in contemporary education, training, resources regarding multimodal education, science lab supplies, hands-on materials for all subjects, that's concerning and speaks to the budget. And I worry that there's also punitive responses to social and emotional needs from students. This tells me that teachers are overwhelmed. Also, due to lack of resources, funding, support perhaps. I worry teachers may feel they have to resort to punitive measures because of a lack of support, but they're never effective in the long term. So when short-term responses are regularly employed, that indicates a base need teachers may have to just survive to the next moment, the next class, or the next day, and we don't want to be a district that runs on survival mode. We certainly don't want that reputation. So please consider funding, a funding structure that helps repair our educational reputation, not just within East Hampton, but in the region, in the state, with our students, with the community. And that's all I'll have to say right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elise. Anyone else online? I don't see any. Anyone attending remotely has one more opportunity to raise your hand virtually, and we can give you an opportunity to speak. Likewise, anyone in public attendance who wishes to share their thoughts, we're going to give it about 30 seconds, and then close public speak for this public hearing. I don't see anything. Most of you are probably aware, but I'll just reiterate, we've adopted Robert's Rules of Order. It's improper for us to respond to you at the time that you're sharing your thoughts publicly, but I want to let all of you know, both those that are here tonight in person and those that have attended remotely to share your thoughts, that we take both your compliments and your criticism with the same importance and significance. We are taking notes, and we will discuss this when we're going to move this forward. Tonight, what we'll be focusing on is the FY '25 budget. Our work doesn't begin nor does it end there. So these are a lot of issues that were raised tonight that we'll have to keep picking up and working on together as we move forward. So we're going to close public speak for this, and we're going to move to a presentation by Nick Burnier, our school business manager, who's going to propose, present his proposal for the FY '25 school year. How's that tech going, Nick?
Working on it.
All right. It's going to be seamless. You should be a co-host. Our goal is, so Nick will have a visual presentation, our goal is that you'll be able to see that on this screen. Check it out. Okay. Yes.
Madam Chair, just to make a point, the presentation and public comment appreciated, but more of a tech thing, the members of the committee who are voting cannot see what's on the screen, which is a concern.
I think I can. I think I'll be okay.
Can we push it back and tip it more this way?
Oh, to get it.
Omar, if you can get these screens to work, we tried.
I'm looking the remote.
They're right there. Right over there because it was on the... Megan, if we just roll it back? I can't roll it back any further.
Not a quarter, not any longer.
I don't want to cut the, see if this quarter is tight. Yep. Thank you very much. Mayor, can you see now again? The angle's okay? Yep. Okay.
Oh, I can go. Okay. No. Good evening, everyone. This is a much larger crowd than I'm used to presenting my monthly budget reports in front of, so I hope I live up to the expectation here. Before I get started, you know, basically what this presentation is, is, you know, a summary of the budget document that contains our FY '25 proposed operating budget. Before I start, there's a couple of folks I'd like to thank who have been very helpful throughout this process. First of all, I'd like to thank Michael O'Connor and his students at East Hampton High School for their work on designing the cover. I think it's great that students design the cover of the budget book every year. You know, it allows them to be represented in a document that, you know, otherwise, they might not think about that much, even though what's in it greatly impacts them. I'd like to thank Melana Hollister for helping me make some of my budget book look pretty. She helped design a few of the pages, and it was very, very helpful, and it, you know, I think the visuals make things stand out well. I'd like to thank Jean Libby for popping it on the website for me and taking care of all that stuff. I'd like to thank our administrative leadership team for all the work throughout the process. These processes are certainly, or can be difficult, and it takes a lot of collaboration, and I appreciate that I work in a place where we have that spirit. And also, I'd like to thank our school committee finance subcommittee for your work and input during the process. We've, we met four times. during the process. We've, we met four times, you know, throughout this process, you know, to come up with what we've got for you tonight. And lastly, I'd like to thank some city officials, both elected and appointed, for their input and conversations that I've had throughout this process, too. It really does take an entire village to develop a budget, but it's important that that village works together because the school department budget is going to be the largest budget in any municipality, so. All right, that being said, we'll get to the actual presentation. So I'd just like to start off, there's like a little at-a-glance slide here, kind of showing some of the things that happen in East Hampton Public Schools. There's an enrollment breakdown by the high school and the three levels at Mountain View. There's some statistics there in terms of what percentage of 11th and 12th grade students successfully completed advanced coursework. Our graduation rate of 88.7% is listed there. That's the class of 2022. Last year's data is not officially available yet from the state. It gives you a list of a number of staff we have within the district, some statistics on, you know, average class size, student-to-teacher ratio, our attendance rate, things like that. We offer 21 after-school sports and over 25 after-school clubs and activities. There are several secondary pathways available. There's a sampling of elective courses listed there. And of course, we had to shout out our We the People team for being state champions eight times, so. You know, I know that every year during budget season, there's always, you know, difficult conversations to be had, but as we have them, I think it's also important to highlight the good things that occur within the district. Little bit of history here. This is really just kind of like state stuff, for lack of a better term, and how our Chapter 70 funding aid is calculated every year. I mean, basically, the city has a minimum share that the state calculates that they're supposed to kick in in order to provide in a minimum education. It's called a foundation budget. When you add the Chapter 70 aid to that, you come up with the required minimum that the city or town needs to spend on education. And then, after it's all done, your, your net school spending is, is, you know, calculated to see where you were based on that. Historically, East Hampton's net school spending is usually about 8% to 10% above the required minimum foundation budget. Believe it or not, there are 15 districts in the state that only have the minimum foundation budget every year, and that's all their people will kick in for them. So I don't know how they function that way, but there are some districts that do. One kind of wrench that got thrown at us this year is our Chapter 70 increase is minimum. The last two years, we were not a minimum aid district anymore. We received over $300,000 in Chapter 70 increase in both FY '23 and '24. That's a huge impact. Going into FY '25, at least what's on the cherry sheet, that comes from the Governor's House to budget proposal, we're back to a minimum aid district receiving only $30 per student, calculated based on our foundation enrollment. So that really only gives us an increase of about $47,400 for next year over this year, which is not much at all. I mean, that's not even a salary. Unfortunately, us and 210 other districts in the state are in that boat, you know, coming up to next year. There's a few reasons for that. The number one is tied to inflation, which is a word I'm certain we're all sick of hearing over the last few years. But when the Student Opportunity Act was passed, they kind of redid the Chapter 70 formula a bit, and they make adjustments based on inflation for various categories. That is kept at 4.5%. So the last couple of years, even though inflation was really high, 4.5%, 4.5%, we still benefited from it. Unfortunately, next year, they've, their calculations put it at 1.3. So that's basically how we became a minimum aid district again. We're not, we didn't lose enrollment. Our subgroups didn't really change all that much, and, you know, it wasn't that. It was, it was really just the inflation factor. There has been some advocacy at the state level for them to finagle that and sort of redesign it, but due to the state revenue not being what they've anticipated over the last six or so months, I don't know how much traction that's going to gain, at least this year. So here's my summary slide. Our FY '25 proposed operating budget is in the amount of $20,675,577.58, which represents a $1,842,176.82 increase over this year's. Percentage-wise, that's 9.78, which is a high increase to ask for. For sure, it's, you know, it's generally increases are lower than that, but there are many, many reasons behind that, which I'll get to as I go through the rest of this presentation. So here's some of the factors that went into all of this. We have about 53.36% of our EEA teachers are in the top three steps of their respective lanes, so it means that a lot of our staff are on, or toward the top of the salary scale. It's unknown if all eligible teachers will move up a step going into next year due to the deadline for course completion not being until August. There are, you know, quite a few people that could move up a step if coursework is completed and documented, but we don't at this time know how many that will be. We know some of them. We do not know all of them. Unknown personnel cost increases as we continue our negotiations with all bargaining units. I already mentioned the Chapter 70 funding being flat. Inflation is currently about 3.4%, so, you know, that's in there, too, and prices of things are still going up. For our students that attend CTEC, their tuition increase will be 5% next year. I do have that figure from them. I don't have Smith-Vokes yet, because the state sets that, and they generally don't do it until April or early May. There has been a push this year, discussed at a couple of school committee meetings here, for more students to attend Smith-Voke instead of CTEC over at the collaborative. So that factors in as well, as Smith-Voke this year costs $4,800 or so more to attend than CTEC does. The out-of-district tuition increase for our students that are in specialized programs out of district is 4.69%. That rate is set by the Operational Services Division in the state. This current year's was 14%. Likely, most of you have heard plenty about that. While 4.69 looks good next to the 14%, if you take the average from like FY '11 up until now, and you back out, this year's 14, because it's an outlier, the average increase is like just under 2%. So that 4.69 is still not great, and certainly does have an impact to the amount that we spend on tuitions. The SIR III funding, part of the COVID relief funding that districts got, is expiring. Funds have to be expended by September 30 of this year. Ours will be expended by June 30 of this year. You know, those funds were vital, crucial, the three rounds of them that we got, to help districts get through the darkest days of the pandemic. But now that the funds are drying up, it doesn't mean that the needs are going with it. So districts find themselves in a, you know, tough position here, where they've been relying on this funding for, you know, the better part of four years, and then all of a sudden, it's gonna be gone. So that is a huge factor with the increase in this proposed budget. On a brighter note, our cafeteria account is looking good because of the universal breakfast and lunch being free. What the meal participation has increased because of that. We have way more students eating meals at school than we did prior to the pandemic, which is very good. Obviously, it means students' needs are being met. It means they're more ready to learn. Anybody who is experiencing food insecurity can, you know, benefit from that, of course. And the meal reimbursements we get have made our account pretty healthy, so. Things I can do with that are really just food service-related, but equipment repairs and things that our maintenance budget used to cover, this can now cover. So that does help us save some, some local funding. Oops. Of course, if you've received a utility bill recently, you understand electricity costs continue to rise, and as you would imagine, it's not cheap to power Mountain View. So those are some of the main factors for our increases. I will get a little more detailed as we go on. What I'm presenting to you tonight is a needs-based budget, something I like to refer to as the path to a long recovery, or perhaps a longer one than we'd thought or hoped. So this budget is a proposal to the school committee that reflects needs and priorities as identified by the district in accordance with our goals, values, and our strategic plan, our strategy for growth. It's one that seeks to align personnel and services as students continue to recover from pandemic-related learning loss and trauma. You've heard of long COVID, certainly. Schools are experiencing a long recovery, as I said, much longer than we'd hoped or even thought. This budget is, our proposed budget, is one that taps other funding sources, such as school choice and circuit breaker, to ease the burden on the city as much as possible while maintaining level services for students who are still showing high needs post-pandemic. And lastly, one that seeks to maintain level services as our COVID relief funds expire, yet our fixed costs continue to rise. This slide right here just shows you that the needs are still very prevalent, even though our enrollment has gone down. Us, along with many districts, experienced a drop in enrollment, particularly in the year that schools reopened from the COVID closures. Many schools were remote for almost all year. Some were hybrid, very few were all-in-person. But regardless of the model that your district had come up with, enrollment dropped universally, pretty much across the state. While that's happened, if you take a look at the subgroups or the selected populations on this slide, you'll see our high needs percentage has gone up 9.9% since the onset of COVID. Our students with disabilities percentage is up to 28.4%, which is very high compared to the state average. That's up 8.5% since the onset of COVID. Our EL population has remained pretty consistent. That's one that hasn't fluctuated much. Our low-income percentage has gone up 7.7%, and our first language, not English, has gone up 1%, so that's remained relatively consistent as well. Bottom line is, you know, the enrollment is down, but the needs are still growing, which is why we are presenting to you a level service budget tonight. Here's enrollment from FY '16 up until what we project next years will be. Our highest was 1523 in FY '16. Our lowest was down to 1380. We're slowly recovering, I would say, but certainly not to the levels prior to the pandemic. This is a class-size slide. At least what we anticipate based on our projected FY '25 enrollment figures, we think about 85 kindergarteners, about 85 first graders, grades two through five grow steadily. But this proposed budget keeps class size at a reasonable number, and it does target the very early grades, as I know is a school committee priority over the last few years, to keep K and 1, you know, as reasonable as possible. Obviously, the youngest kids have needs that the older ones don't. So this is what our average class size would look like based on the enrollment projections.
One second. I want to remind the public, because I see people, like, some of these slides are gonna catch your interest, increasing. This entire budget book is available on our website, so you can peruse it at your leisure at home as well. We do have in-person copies that can be viewed in the building, but it's probably easier for you to access it through the website.
And I'll post this presentation on the website tomorrow as well, so it's there for you. Or actually, Jean will post this on the website tomorrow. Okay, so in this proposed budget, our FTE changes are nothing, nothing major here. The proposal is to reduce 1.0 FTE special ed teacher at Mountain View that's currently vacant. We're just proposing to not replace that position. We do have a 1.0 FTE teacher returning to East Hampton High from a leave of absence, and one East Hampton High School staff member who will increase from a 0.67 to a 0.83. So our net increase is just that 0.16, which, you know, does represent a level service budget. Here's some district-generated funding sources, the other buckets of money that we pull from to fund our schools. Our special ed 240 grant, I anticipate will be about 558. Those figures won't be out till later in this year, but that should be around where it is. If anything, it's slightly low. Out-of-district tuition is a huge piece of what we use that for. We consult with folks in the social, emotional realm. Specialized related services can be funded out of there, as well as professional development. That's a vital grant that no district could survive without. Our Title I grant funds three reading specialists in the elementary level, as well as some supplies. Title II generally funds mentor stipends for our new educator induction program, as well as some district PD. Title IV is generally used for our English learner program tutors and supplies, PD supplies, some intervention materials. You can see those two grants are relatively small. Circuit breaker, for those of you who are not familiar with that, that's reimbursement for high special ed costs. We get the reimbursement the year after the spending happens, so the special ed spending that we're doing right now, the portion of it that hits the threshold will be claimed in the summer, and the reimbursement will come in next year. This budget proposes to use $720,000 out of that account, and really, it'll pay for tuitions and specialized transportation. And then there's some other revolving accounts, including school choice, that's the big one. I propose 2.245 million out of that to fund some staffing, regular and Voke transportation as an offset to the electricity cost. The food service revolving account number is in there. That way, is, might be why it seems so high. It's because the food service is about $830,000 of that. And the athletic revolving fund as well, which funds athletic officials, some equipment, some transportation, and things like that. So you add all that up, and you get over $2 million we use to support students that doesn't come out of the general fund. Here's kind of an overview slide. You see our, the FY '23 budget from two years ago. You see this current year's budget, and then the proposed figure that I mentioned earlier. So you can kind of see the history here over time of the increases. The components of this increase, though, like, how did we get to that 9.78, you might wonder? So there's a little breakdown here. Personnel salary moving from grants to the general fund would be just shy of $500,000. That's, that's really your SIR III funded staff, with also small pieces funded out of an SEL grant that we currently have that we're not gonna have next year. Special ed transportation, I project, is gonna go up about $91,644 based on our current student needs. That's, you know, about 0.49% of that increase. Out-of-district tuitions is gonna, are gonna go up $350,504.76 based on our current statistics. So of that 9.78%, that accounts for almost 2% of it. Utilities, I think, about $36,000, but the rest of that's in school choice. I mean, I think it's gonna go up more than that, but this is just what's tapping the general fund here. but this is just what's tapping the general fund here. Vocational tuition, I project to go up about $189,928. I base that on 87 students, which is the best guess I have right now. What I do is I take our graduating seniors, obviously, back them out. I move up the grades 10, or 9, 10, and 11 students. And then I do communicate with folks over at Mountain View to see how many applications have gone out and everything, so I can try to project how many grade nine students there will be. That's a little harder to do, but I've come to 87. With an increase in Smith-Vok as opposed to LPVEC, as I said earlier, there seems to be sort of a push, some, you know, increased interest in attending that program rather than CTEC. And the other part of that is the graduating class at Smith-Vok right now is only five students. So there will certainly be more than five incoming ninth graders. So it's not like there's going to be an offset there. We're not graduating a large class. We're graduating very few, and there'll probably be about 11 or 12 that come in. So, you know, you factor all that in, and you're looking at a pretty sizable increase in vocational tuition. And then the rest of it's just all other categories, other personnel increases that weren't in grants, supplies, contracted services, some expenses that were in the SER grants. There's a lot of software in there. And we did do a pretty deep dive about, you know, what can we live without, what don't we need anymore? I mean, there was stuff that needed to be purchased for remote learning that's not really needed anymore. But there's also a lot of screeners that were purchased with COVID money that are necessary and will be as time goes on. So we're proposing to build that into this budget as well, so staff can continue to do formative assessments, both in the world of academics and socially emotionally. So all of that accounts to about 3.5% of that. So you total all that up together, and that's why we're at, you know, relatively abnormally high proposed increase. If you break it down by location, you'll see the high school in Mountain View. Nothing really sticks out there. Their increases are pretty similar and not that high. But special ed and district-wide, you'll see jump up quite a bit. I think you've all heard ad nauseam about the special ed expenses. But, you know, district-wide, you know, there's a lot of personnel in there as well. So that's, you know, if you break it down by location, what it comes down to. And then I think this is my last slide. It's a summary of total costs from all funding sources, just so you can kind of see everything that goes into a whole school budget. The first column's the general fund. You can see the figures we spend on personnel, transportation, tuitions. That includes both Voke and special ed tuition. Utilities and then all other costs would be, you know, supplies and contracted services and things like that. The bottom figure there is our proposed budget for next year. You'll see $1.2 million proposed out of school choice, 750 going towards personnel, 300 towards transportation, and 150 towards utilities. Circuit breaker, you can see transportation and tuitions totaling $720,000. Our food service account is listed there. I mean, that will take care of itself. There's not going to be any impact on the general fund, but it's important that that's represented. Our athletic revolving fund, a little bit for personnel. That funds an assistant track coach. And there's a little bit built in there for postseason bonuses when coaches' teams make the postseason. Transportation, we do budget some from the general fund for that, but it always runs out because transportation is expensive, and we often have to contract with people other than Durham because they can't get buses for the events, particularly in the fall and spring and the winter. It's not a problem at all because most things are at night. But spring and fall, it's harder. And then all other costs for athletic would be equipment and officials, renting the rink from Williston, you know, things like that, memberships, awards, things, you know, things of that nature. Chapter 71 revolving fund is, that's bus pass revenue that gets applied to our bus expenses. And then grants and other revolving, I'd mentioned earlier to you. You see that, you know, Title I does cover some personnel, and the rest of it is largely tuition. So you add all that up together, and you come up with a, you know, total budget of $24,260,439.58. So, you know, even though our proposed operating budget from the general fund this year is high, we do tap other funding sources as much as we can to offset that. One last thing about school choice. That $1.2 million figure is high. It's higher than I would have liked to have used. But we're in a position where there's no choice. I mean, the proposed operating budget as is is high, and it was important to offset that as much as possible. The impact of that, though, is down the road a couple of years, we won't be able to spend more school choice money than we take in on a given year. For the last few fiscal years, we have. We've done that comfortably. And at the end of FY '21, there was a pretty sizable balance in that fund. And, you know, the reason for that, a lot of it had to do with COVID, which the spending was down. I mean, there was, you know, a lot of things not happening, less transportation, less subs, less activities running. I mean, so stuff that was budgeted for wasn't all spent. So school choice money wasn't touched that much. Fast forward to FY '22. When I, well, when I got hired right at the beginning of FY '23, I had to close the FY '22 fiscal year, and there was a deficit. So I had to apply quite a bit of school choice money to close that gap more than was budgeted. Last year, we applied just about as much, slightly less than what was budgeted, actually. And then in this current year, I'm going to have to apply more than was budgeted. I know there's going to be a deficit at the end of the year. That figure at this point, I, you know, I don't know, but it will be offset by extraordinary relief funding that we're going to get through circuit breaker, probably in May. That being said, we take in about, I don't know, $683,000 or so thousand of school choice revenue currently this year. And as you, you know, it's not going to be any higher than that next year. I mean, maybe slightly. It could very well be less. It's less this year than last year. It really depends on how many kids choice in. And right now, you're just going off your current group. You don't really know until the year starts. But you can see that $1.2 million figure is much, much higher than what we're taking in, which, again, we can do that right now. It's there, and it's important to do to offset the ask of the city. But starting in FY '27, that formula's not going to work anymore. I think I can get through FY '26 doing this, based on my projections. I carry a live spreadsheet at all times about my school choice projections because they do fluctuate throughout the year, just because you want an updated figure. But FY '27, I mean, we'll still obviously use it to offset the budget, but the amount we use, it's going to have to go down because it won't be there anymore. All right, we finally get to my question slide.
We want to start, send anybody, who wants to go first? Mayor?
Sure.
Yeah.
Should I unshare this? I don't think anyone wants to look at that. Do you want me to stop sharing?
It keeps our faces off the screen. I mean, folks might ask questions off of the slides, and you might want to go back to a slide.
Oh, that's true. Okay, I'll leave it there then.
So, great budget book. We've met a couple of times. Thank you both to the superintendent and to the business manager of Juan. Having a couple of meetings with the internal finance committee, building out and looking through your budget, I would say the process has been strong. And I think a lot of that has to do with Nick attending the weekly internal finance meeting, which is composed of the treasurer, the auditor, the assessor, Nick.
HR director.
Oh, sugar, yeah. HR director, and myself, so.
And Lindsay.
And Lindsay, yeah. So, thank you, Nick.
Got it.
You know, a couple of questions that I have that I guess I will admit upfront, I know the answer, but would like to get on the record and make sure that I'm actually looking at the right numbers.
Sure.
With the total city expenditure of 39% for education, are there any other expenditures that push that percent up?
Yeah, okay. If you, and I'm thinking that that 39% came from the DLS website, you know, the interactive tool you can use. If you take a look at the pie charts on there, like, it'll break up cities and towns' spending into various buckets for their whole total operating budget. Municipalities, you know, for education, you're not going to see health insurance in there. You're not going to see dental insurance in there. You're not going to see retirement contributions in there. That's going to be under unclassified. A place like East Hampton's going to have to hire debt service than other places because we just built a $109 million school that we're going to be paying off for quite some time. So the total picture of education spending is contained in a couple of those different buckets. If you look at a town budget, however, particularly one that's a member of a regional school district, health insurance is in a regional school district's budget. So all of that's in there. So a debt service would be there, too. So, you know, it's just important that when people look at those things, myself included, you know, the story behind the statistics is there, too.
Great, thank you. And then as far as debt service for the new school, that is in a different bucket, and it's not a part of this budget, correct?
Correct. No, that's one of the city's indirect costs. There was a page in the larger budget document that details the FY '24 city indirects. Just the FY '25 ones I don't have until the city council budget's passed, and then the auditor will give them to me, which I need for my end-of-the-year report, as well as for next year's budget book. That document, plus what's in my presentation, will give you your net spending, if you back out transportation.
I asked you this question last year. I'll ask you it again this year. With the budget that you're presenting and how you described where you would get money and sources, do you feel that this budget, the amount and what you guys have all put together, will get us through the next fiscal year with known expenses right now?
With known expenses, yes. Absolutely. I, with unknown expenses, you never know. You're an IT server away from, you know, a problem sometimes, but yes. Known expenses, yes.
Especially with enrollment and teachers not getting that info until the fall, but the budgets do now.
Okay, that's all I had. Thanks. I just want to piggyback off of that question and stab Maureen with my pen. Sorry about that, Maureen. Oh, my God. Oh, known expenses. Can you just speak very briefly for public edification and a reminder for those who don't sit on finance subcommittee, the regulations that a school department is under that might differ from a different municipal department, say, as far as accurate projections, and then meeting that budget rather than, you know, trying to, as far, when we speak about known expenses and budgeting for that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's, I think what you're probably asking me has to deal with, like, asking for appropriations and, you know, from the city after the fact. It's generally something school departments are not really encouraged to do just because the State Department of Education is watching you and everything. If you're doing it every year, they might start taking a look at you. That being said, there are extraordinary circumstances, of which we saw one last year, that we thankfully were able to get an appropriation to get us through the rest of last year. And then I think, I don't know, five or six years ago, there was a boiler issue that happened, like, you know. Something like that, that's a different story because, I mean, a school budget can't fix a $150,000 boiler, generally, unless you're a huge municipality that gets hundreds of thousands of dollars of Chapter 70 funding, you know. We're not that city. So instances like that, it's one thing. But otherwise, you know, your budget is supposed to be indicative of your known costs, or at least the best is you can predict them six months before they happen.
I think the mayor was trying to make that point. I just wanted to really hit that point home for the public, yeah.
Hi, Nick. Thank you very much. Great presentation. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I appreciate all the work that everybody has done, finance committee, the hearing from the public, and then the work that, like, happens every day in our schools, which I am astounded by all the time. I have a question about out-of-district tuition for special education. So just as kind of like background for those of you who aren't as kind of in the weeds about special education, there are some students with disabilities for whom, in order to receive a free and appropriate public education in which they make effective progress, they need to attend a private school or a public school in a different district. And then we pay for them to do that. And that's all, you know, laid out in their individual education plan. And so my question is just, aside that IEP and that individual process, is there, do we get any say or any ability to monitor those placements or to negotiate the rate at which, the rate that we're paying for students to go to tuition?
The rate, we can't negotiate. That's set by the OSD. The only time we could negotiate a rate is if we were tuitioning a student to another public school. You know, sometimes another district has a specialized program that we just don't, and it makes sense to pay tuition to send a student there. In that sense, yeah, you can negotiate with their special ed director and kind of figure out what makes sense. But for, like, the approved private day schools or the residential schools that we send students to, there's no negotiating there. I suppose there's some negotiating room in terms of where a student goes. I mean, I'm not terribly well-versed in that process, not being in the special education field, but I know that there's often waiting lists at some places, and sometimes families end up with a different placement than maybe they thought they were going to have or whatever, just because it's hard to get in a place. I think it's sometimes commonplace to show a family a couple of different options, see what's going to be the best for their student. But in terms of the price, that's really non-negotiable.
Yeah. And the other question I had was about transportation for special education. Is there, I mean, and we might, it might be something where, like, you and I have to sit down and, like, look at Excel together to work this out. But is there, like, you know, I'm just thinking, so for those of you who don't know me, I have a child who uses special transportation to get to school. And one thing that I've wanted to do for a while is see if there's a way that we could provide a way for him to take the regular bus into school with additional adult support. And I think that would probably be cost-effective. I'm sure I'm not the only parent who is feeling, you know, who is interested in that. And so I was just kind of wondering, is there a way, you know, that we can kind of look at and see if that's something that's actually going to, working towards a more inclusive solution might actually end up saving us?
I would say it's definitely possible. We currently have, I mean, our out-of-district vans are our out-of-district vans. Those are going to be what they are. We currently have 10 in-district vans and three pre-k vans. I think the pre-k vans are probably going to be what they are. But of the 10 in-district vans, I mean, there could be a handful of students who could thrive on the regular transportation bus, and possibly, we could cut down one or two of those vans, which certainly would be a savings.
I also just want to make it very clear to everybody else, like, if you're thinking about your own kid and what your own kid needs, don't think about the school budget. Just think about your own kid. I just happen to be in the weird position where I'm, like, thinking about both things at once, but nobody else should do that.
We're going to pitch for any families where this is paying, and it's, we're going to be scheduling a work session later this year, likely by June. It'll be at least two hours. And what we're going to be doing is looking at that transportation budget, including special education transportation options, top to bottom, and trying to exhaust any and all. But there's a lot of things we want to look at. That is one of the big pieces.
Yeah.
Including with the energy committee from the city.
So stay tuned.
Who have done a ton of great background work on electric buses and all sorts of things, so.
Yeah. Those are like the two that I have right now.
Okay.
I was expecting to be at the end, so.
Yeah, no problem. Lynn, did you have any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
First of all, thank you, Nick, for your hard work. I mean, this is very thorough, it's very informative. Thank you to everyone who was here tonight. I appreciate you, and I appreciate your input. I'm new to school committee. I'm learning. What stands out to me, what I heard in comments tonight, and what stands out to me is the difference between school choice out and school choice in. That's something that is very important to me, being able to create a school district where more students want to come into us. And so I'm going to be looking, as I work with the other members of the committee and all of you as a community, because we are a community that works together to provide these services for our children. And so that's just the comment that I wanted to make tonight, is that I think that I appreciate all that all of you. I hope that you understand how hard we and how dedicated we are to trying to provide that for these children.
Thank you. I'm going to just go back to you last, if you have any comments to share. Okay. Do you have any questions, Megan?
I don't have any questions. I've asked Nick so many questions over the past four meetings. I just want to thank you for all of the work that you put into this and the way you're responsive to the values of the committee and the community. You've run a bunch of different models for us that we've looked at every possible way of of doing this. And we just over and over have said, there's no, we're not doing cuts. It's just not going to happen because that's a value that we all share and appreciate that.
Yes, similarly, I'm on the finance subcommittee, so none of this was news. It was all just repetition of what we've been talking about. I want to thank Nick for preparing us for this, however, because I can see in the news a lot of districts that are looking at, they're slicing positions and they're slicing money to people because that's really the only way you can really make a significant change to a budget is staff. And that's what we've been fighting for and that's what Nick has been preparing us for. Unfortunately, we did receive a lot of money for for COVID, but unfortunately, when you look at how the government, you know, sets these things up, they don't look at it the way as if a tornado went through your town. The tornado is out of town, but the debris is everywhere. And so we see that our kids still need a significant amount of support in social and emotional needs and and the staff as well. The staff have families in the district, out of the district. So Nick has worked with us to to work as hard as we can to find money. He's moved money around. He's making it very clear that that's not something we can dance around every year. But our our goal was we don't want to lose people because as some parents even stated, you know, it's like dominoes. And when when one group suffers, it affects the entire community. So and thank you for all of you who were waiting outside for this meeting and for coming into this meeting and and your support. And then thanks to Nick for trying as hard as you can to make this a stomachable budget.
You're welcome.
Oh, and lastly, I want to say level services is not what we need. It's what parents are begging for. So that's very important for us to know is that we need more, but we're we're clinging to hoping to not lose things. So thank you, Nick.
Sure.
I was thinking about enrollment. I was just curious, like, the long-term projections, like, are we, is it a downward slope? Or I feel like I've read that it doesn't necessarily look good, but I'm curious what...
I don't really think it looks downward. If you recall, last year, there was an enrollment study done that was kind of connected to the, you know, a couple of proposed developments within the city. Because we wanted to see impact on, you know, will basically will Mountain View be able to handle the possible influx of students that would be attending it, should these developments come to fruition? The study, I didn't actually get a copy of it until probably October of this year. But when I read it, I it did not seem like the developments were going to have a terribly huge impact. So I don't know that I'd be looking at enrollment going dramatically up, but, you know, with new housing opportunities in the city, I don't see it going down either. I think it'll be relatively flat. It'll, I mean, there'll be a bubble year here and there, you know how that is. But, you know, I think over time it'll increase slowly, but not like, like, I don't think you're going to see FY '16 numbers in the next couple of years, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I could just add to that impact study. Interestingly, there would not, it's one thing I've learned with enrollment going down and resources needed, enrollment doesn't go down by a specific grade. So we are obligated and want to give exactly the same, every classroom, whether it's 13 or 23, the same services. That said, the housing development that's going on in East Hampton, first of all, starts in 2028 and goes through 2032. They don't all come at once. They also help East Hampton because there will be some percent that have children and they will fill voids that we anticipate when we looked at the Donahue Institute overall study on population and shifting. Recently, I have asked the Donahue Institute and our own city councillor, Tom Peake, with much-needed migrant population coming into the state, will that affect what we think you can handle? There'll be a small bump here, but we are not in one of the districts that are experiencing expecting growth over 1% or 2%, not close. The housing kind of helps us fill the the schools that we built for certain numbers. So it's it's interesting, but I, the impact study kind of painted that picture, especially when you draw the housing unit additions in East Hampton over what really be the next eight to nine years.
Thank you for elaborating.
Yeah, I concur with the mayor. And I would say regarding enrollment in the shorter term, the two things that will impact us sooner, but not as much as something like that would be, A, the exchange of housing units from families without children to families with, which is a trend we see in our local market, and then what if any impacts we see in some of our neighboring districts making dramatic cuts to staffing, how that may or may not affect choice in, choice out numbers in neighboring districts into our district.
I was going to add one piece.
Go ahead, Megan.
School choice thing. So there's, when we're talking about the enrollment, there's the birth rate part of things, right? And there's, I mean, we can't change how many kindergartners we have expected in the city because that's how many were born, you know, five or six years ago. So there's that piece. And there's a couple of cliffs that we've been talking about, like, all the way up to, you've probably seen them in higher ed, too. There's these like enrollment cliffs, like, all of a sudden, there's way fewer kids. That's separate from the school choice piece of how many kids we choice in and how many kids choice out. So and we've heard parents talking about that. I just wanted to keep those two things sort of separate, like, we're not talking about this huge crisis of like people fleeing from East Hampton. That's not what's going on. It's that there are fewer births for this upcoming kindergarten class.
Yeah, I mean, for what it's worth, our our choice out compared to our choice in numbers have trend, have been trending towards leveling off. There is a page in the budget book that shows back to like, I don't know, FY '13 or so, when there's like 105 student gap in between who is leaving and who is coming. This year, it's only 17. While we obviously want to take more in than 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 choice out to other places, you know, that's quite the gap closure.
Not looking to to increase that gap more, but it just didn't, I don't want to make it sound like there's a crisis of people leaving. There's just not as many babies in some years.
Superintendent Ben, do you have any thoughts, comments, questions? All right, now, well, we're going to let Ben go first.
All good. I just wanted to add, thank you for this work. Like, it's been a real pleasure kind of watching you navigate these numbers and I, it feels like you're a very straight shooter and it's been, it's been great. And I'm also similarly, you're, you all being here and and standing out is hugely important and like the the testimony is extremely potent and you're saying like, there isn't a big exodus. And yet, it feels like, you know, not from what we heard tonight, but also just other things I've heard, it, there is a certain kind of discontent going on for parents that I think we need to start thinking about a little more deeply, like, you know, I heard, I keep bringing this up and there are no solutions. We need more than level services. A lot of extremely powerful commentary, we don't want to be a district that runs in survival mode. So I realize that this is a big, this is a big ask, but it's also like, and I don't know how you could, I don't know, we, it has to happen. So like, that's kind of where my mind is drifting. So thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you for clarifying about that.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I have just one more question. And I don't know, Nick, this might be out of your wheelhouse a little bit. I'm thinking about that special education percentage, that 24.5%, I think. And I was just wondering, is there any way to tease apart how much of that is due to an increase of identified need and how much of that is due to better child find policy?
It's probably out of my wheelhouse.
If anybody else has anything.
I'm going to put that on that.
I would like to dig into that because I do, I see that number come up a lot and it just, in my day job, I spend a lot of time trying to help families get connected to special education and get their child identified. So in a way, part of me is like, I like see, I like the idea that our child find has improved and I remember this being an issue when I was last on school committee, too.
I can mention that this proposed budget does propose reallocating Mountain View Elementary position to a Mountain View Middle School intervention position. I believe I left that out of my my dialogue earlier, but we we see a great need for tier two supports at that level. So, you know, we think that'll probably have some impact on future, you know, identification or not needing it because there's been tier two supports.
Right, because there's more naturalistic support, yeah.
Any other committee members with questions? I would love to hear superintendent's thoughts.
If I could just answer Sam's question a little bit.
Yes, I thought you might be able to.
Yes. So I think, yes, child find has improved, but I think that training for multi-tiered system of support also needs to to get deepened.
Okay.
And somebody today also talked about, I'm a big fan of universal design learning, and I think that's, that's the focus. So basically, what that means is that you treat children where their needs are in the same classroom in multi-tiered approaches to learning. And when you do that, then students don't necessarily get determined as special ed because you're actually meeting them, their needs at the level they're at. Now, it's a, you need a lot of experience for that to be effective and it involves a lot of professional development, but it really is the answer. And you do see less number of special education students when you do that. So that's something that we talked about and it's in our professional development plans for next year.
And just another question, and this is getting in, for that special education student percentage, is that all students with disabilities or is that students on IEPs and 504 plans? Or is that just students on IEPs?
IEPs.
Just IEPs, so not 504?
No.
Okay. That's good to know. That's actually, that's very helpful because like not every student with a disability is on an IEP.
That data is from the DESI website, so it's just students with IEPs.
So on the budget, first of all, I want to thank Nick for his work on this budget. It just not starting appearing in January until now. Every single day, when different things come up and we say, can we afford this? First thing he says is no. And then, right, and that's good.
That's good.
Because you have to be fiscally responsible. And all of us see programs that were like, oh my, this would be such a great program. Can we purchase it? And sometimes we can and sometimes we can't. But his, his eye is always on too because he was a principal, what's and a teacher, what's best for kids. So I really want to say that is a unique position for business manager to have been a teacher and a principal because when the requests come in, it comes from an understanding of living that experience. So I want to thank you for that on the budget. I'm so happy to say that this is a level service budget. I'm sure all of you have been reading what's happening around us. There are cuts happening in so many places for staff and what we're presenting to you tonight is a level service budget with no cuts. So I just want to say how fortunate it is that we are presenting that. In order to present that, there were a lot of meetings and a lot of collaboration that went on. We talked with the city council president. We've met several times with the mayor. We sat on the finance subcommittee. We met with district and school leadership several times. We're in negotiation with the union, but we've had so many great conversations with teachers and the union. And then, of course, our school committee that we have here that are really all focused on what's best for students coming from outside here and had a lot of experience with budgets. I really want to say that it really makes me proud to be the interim superintendent here because it is so obvious that parents and everyone that works for the district really do have the same goals. And I hear what parents say about some of the other needs that they want met. I think we do have to be creative on in meeting some of those that don't necessarily reflect finances. And we have to be really very creative and looking for other ways to do, for example, how we bring world language to the middle school. I mean, there are other ways that we can do that that doesn't, don't fit in this budget, but because it doesn't fit in the budget, doesn't mean that we're not going to look to the things that you brought up to us today to find other solutions for those problems. So I appreciate that and I appreciate you emailing me and keeping that information and continue to check us and say, look, you said that you would try this, what has happened here? These services that we're talking about today that are in this budget is just for this fiscal year. So, you know, we are hopeful, we'll see what's going to happen in future years to provide other services. I want to say that also as we continue to look for resources, we also appreciate, if you have some ideas on resources, sharing it with us. I think this is a strong budget. The budget book is very tight. Every bit of money that we put in and we put out is listed there. It's, it's the true story. So tonight, I'm really asking the whole school committee to approve this budget. Thank you.
Go ahead, of course.
I would be remiss not to share a highlight from, I don't know, last budget meeting, maybe. Also, Nick mentioned the outstanding willingness and ingenuity of our new special ed director to do some calculations that a lot of sped directors do not to bring more district money and for programs that we may or may not offer now that we're eligible for and looking at those IEPs and service grids. The calculation, I note a little bit from days past and it's, a lot of districts just pass it up and don't bother. So thank you. And I just thought everyone should note that you joined with great enthusiasm. Thank you.
Any other comments in the committee? Questions? All right, the 10-second wrap-up. So we want to, I want to say, I've been following the news closely about neighboring communities. It's not, it's not a great year. It's not a great year in our area. There's a lot of struggles. When we say, particularly those of us who sat on finance, that we took a lot of pride and satisfaction in in the budget that Nick largely developed with help and that we approved, I want to reiterate that 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 doesn't end our work. We're still partly through one school year. We are continuing, this is one stage of the process and we're, we've identified 100 more to come. The conversation doesn't end tonight. What our main focus was with this budget was to try to align what the city could afford with protecting every single position that we currently offer in our schools. That's not everything. We are not done, but that may be the best that we can do and pass out of this city this budget season. I'm going to leave it there. Anybody else have anything to say? Otherwise, we could entertain a motion regarding the proposed budget.
I'll just add, what the superintendent mentioned about, we are listening. We know that we're not adding things specifically in the budget for, especially we hear a lot of needs in the middle school and we are looking for ways, we've been in contact with places where fish and wildlife, for example, where there are programs where we can try to get STEM programs or foreign language programs where we can be creative. We want to be creative. We want to be creative with you. We don't want to look at this and just say, this is what we have and that's what we're going to stick with. We want to look for, I don't believe in just saying, okay, we're stuck now. We can be creative and we want to do that with you. So it means a lot that you're here, but like, like Laura just said, it's not done after tonight when we pass. There's still conversations, there's still dialogue, and there's still things that we can do to grow, whether we have the money or whether we can find it in other places.
Yeah, I just want to jump on that. We are looking at creative ways to try to fill in these gaps. Everybody here is committed, really strongly committed to trying to bring the best services that we can to the children in this community. And we are really looking hard. Yeah.
Anyone else? Still looking for a motion, y'all.
I would love to put forward a motion that we approve the fiscal year '25 budget as proposed by our business manager, Director of Business.
Thank you, Megan. Can we get a second?
I can second, but...
Thank you, Sam. Any further discussion? Questions, comments? No. Okay. We're going to roll call vote on this one. Ben Hershey?
Uh, Ben Hershey, aye.
Erica Yeh?
Erica, aye.
Megan Harvey?
With gratitude, aye.
Linda?
Probably aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mayor?
Obstain.
Many rolls. Laura Scott, aye. Deep gratitude. Motion passes. Thank you all very much. That was a lot of work. I want to say, too, it took a lot of bandwidth. It took a lot of bandwidth at this committee, so a big chunk of our focus can shift back to a lot of things, including many, many of the issues that were raised tonight.
To all the other things that take up bandwidth.
I already started meeting.
Just roll with it.
Close, right. Oh, okay, so we're.
She can't say it loudly.
Just close the hearing.
Close the hearing. Close this public hearing. Thank y'all so much. We are na, I just, I don't remember the specifics. We don't need to roll into the public session. No, this is just considered a new, new agenda item. Okay, we are now picking up.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, with the regular session.
And now the meeting starts.
Announcements? Megan, do you have any correspondence?
Correspondence. I have just two pieces of correspondence that came to me. One, two, I'm just confirming, three parents who directly emailed and, and staff members who emailed me about concerns with the budget and requesting that this committee approve a level services budget, and that is just since the last school committee meeting. Others before that have been reported at other meetings. I believe there were others that have gone to the chair.
I, yeah, I received several, but there were three main points. The first was a request for a level service budget. The second was a request for a fair contract for our teachers and other bargaining units. And the third would be identifying needs particularly at the elementary and middle school level, and I think we spoke at that, I spoke about that at length. But that was the correspondence that I received since our last meeting.
And then, this is not a piece of correspondence, but I do have an update on our eel grant. I did hear from, I'm very excited about our American eel grant. It was approved.
Yay!
Yes. I don't have specifics. That's being worked out between Fish and Game Wildlife and Brian Sokowski. Okay, thank you, Bry. Hopefully, he's watching that. But he, he got it, and he's going to be working on the plan, and he will present it, and I will direct him to our Director of Business Services, who, there's no rest for the weary. Next thing you know, we got to bring American eels into the classroom, it's going to be really fun. And my, uh, my kid is very excited about the eels, so. It's going to be great, and it, it could be multi-year, there's lots of, it's a lot of possibilities with this. Multi-eels. Multi-eel.
Why stop with eels?
Why stop at eels?
I don't know. Anyway. He's not bringing them here for the presentation.
He's going to bring them to you. He's going to have them at your house, if that's okay.
Fantastic. In your bathroom.
In the classroom.
So that's it for announcements. Any public comment? We still have some remote attendees and some public attendees. Anybody in either audience have anything to share?
Hello, Kira Henninger again. I know that you can't answer my questions, but after observing the budget hearing, there is a point of clarification that I'm interested in. In the presentation just given, there was talk from multiple committee members saying that there were no cut positions, except the budget presentation that is linked to the website does have a 1.0 full-time special ed teacher position that is eliminated. So I'm not sure if that has been changed since that was updated, or if that is still a fact. I think that should be clarified. And I'm also very concerned that the same budget presentation document states that there's an increase of 39 students in special ed in the past year, 5.7% increase, and instead of increasing staff, we are decreasing staff. So again, I'm worried that we are not meeting our legal obligations for IEP services, and I think that should be looked at, and if it was an error, and that is no longer the case, that that position is being eliminated, I think it should be corrected.
Thank you. Anyone else care to contribute to public speak, either in person or remotely? If you are attending remotely, you can raise your virtual hand, however that works. Give me about 30 seconds. None? Okay. We are going to close public comment for this regular session. We're moving on to school committee discussion, policy subcommittee. Sam, as chair, do you have any update?
Yes, we had a meeting last week. We went over the new MASC policies around student technology use, and there were a few others on there, too. The minutes are up on the website, and how does this work now? Do we?
Did you pass anything out of policy?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so that'll come to us for the first reading?
Yes, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, moving along. And we have a meeting on Friday morning.
Okay.
And we're, we're settling in, just so people are aware, I know people are used to municipal meetings being in the evenings. It just worked out better for all of our schedules to do it every other Friday morning, and so that's what we're doing.
Okay, great. For those who might be interested in watching, listening, or speaking to that first reading, I would expect it will likely be on the April 9 agenda for our regular session. Okay, finance.
Megan, as chair, do you have anything to add? I can't think of what else I could possibly report. I.
Want to expand on that budget proposal?
Could I? Can I address a question?
Sure.
Okay. So thank you for that question. The, the language of how that, and I might tap in, the Director of Business if I need to, or just correct me maybe if I'm wrong, that is a position that's not currently filled. It's a vacant position.
Special education.
The special education position. So we have been all year without that position, and it was in last year's budget, and it just, we don't need it, and it hasn't been filled, and so moving into next year, that's being removed from the budget line, and instead, we have this other position going in that we can, and increase that we can fill, and something that we have identified as a need that we're going to fill.
And that need is being serviced by the interventionist position that was added at the middle school level.
Right.
We're going to have to look into the increase of 39 students and follow up.
Yes, that part I cannot say more about, but.
It's, so finance just finished up the budget, nothing else. Do you have a meeting scheduled?
We don't, but we have work sessions that we'll tell you about in a little bit, and those will cover things that we, that finance will kind of take on, that fall under finance purview, which I'm sure Nick is thrilled, Nick just looked up like, what? Stay tuned, stay tuned about all that kind of stuff. But just, I think, again, thank you to Nick, who has put a ton of work into this. There will be, uh, this will go into sort of the mayor's hands for a little while. The mayor will propose a budget for the entire city. It will go to city council finance, it will go out of city council finance to the entire city council, so even the budget process is not done. Stay tuned, there's plenty of public meetings you could attend and learn much more.
Chair, if I could, there will be another public hearing on the school budget in front of the city council finance committee. I don't think that, that hearing has not been scheduled yet, but as far as public comment, and that's another great opportunity for the public, and city council, the finance committee will hear it out before they give comments back to, to me as a department.
May 7.
May what?
7.
May 7.
6:00 PM?
Don't know the time.
Don't know what time. We'll announce at our next meeting what that time is.
It's 5:00, 6:00, it's definitely.
In the evening.
Yeah, in the evening, for sure.
It'll always be posted to the Agenda Center at East Hampton.
The next item for school committee discussion is a superintendent search work session. We've scheduled two dates for work sessions. This first one is pretty locked down, so we're going to be, we're going to resume our work on the superintendent search. That work session will be a public meeting, will be held at the conference room right behind us, a slightly more casual format, so we can entertain a little bit more public discourse. That is scheduled for this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. We expect it to run about two hours. It will not be hybrid. The point is for there to be public interaction for those who are interested. That next item is school council and school improvement plan work session. I am currently in communication, we have a tentative date for that, but what we wanted to do was bring an expert in from the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, to, who has a long background in school councils, their roles, the development of school improvement plans. We really wanted to pull on her counsel to aid with that. She is not available for the meeting that we had tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, April 10th. So at, I'm going to have to, we're going to have to figure out exactly what to do about that, so that is a tentative date that is set now, and it may be rescheduled to accommodate. I think that meeting would be much more productive if we got that sort of professional counsel. So likely, we're going to shove that April 10 date somewhere else, but this Thursday at 6:00 PM is unlike Donkey Kong for the superintendent's search.
Can I add one thing for that? So on our agenda for Thursday is, we're going to continue progress on the superintendent search, and also, we have a, a done item to discuss other things that we might need to have work sessions directed towards. So i, if you would like to come and just contribute ideas for things that, you know, transportation, we've talked about, school council, we've talked about vocational schools, we've talked about, so this is an idea generating.
The idea for us this year is to set a full year's tentative calendar with roughly one work session every month or every five weeks or so. So we'll have more updates on that at our next meeting.
That might be news to some people here.
Yes. Action items?
Yeah, okay. I have a motion here to approve the minutes of the February 7, 2024 executive session, negotiations with a stipulation to withhold until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chair.
You get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
And I'm going to put a motion on the table to approve an out-of-state field trip to High Meadow in Granby, Connecticut for East Hampton High School grade 12 students on June 3, 2024. Is there anything we want to add to that?
It's their annual senior hoo-ha trip. They have a great time every year. Do we get a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 3/7/2024 in the amount of $583,966.82.
May the second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 3/7/2024 in the amount of $199,001.34.
I'm going to get a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 3/7/2024 in the amount of $199,001.34.
I'm going to get a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Do you want to introduce this motion before I make it?
Right, so we have one more motion. So the prior school committee voted on the next item last year. We, um, to extend our fantastic interim superintendent Beninda's position, an additional school year, that also requires a waiver from DESI, because of your status as an illustrious retiree.
Yes.
In fact, so there was just a little issue with that prior, prior motion, because the date for the extension was a bit muddy, and there was a contribution made from somebody who didn't make, anyway. So to dot all our i's and cross all our t's, and just to give Superintendent Maureen another little boost about how much we adore her, we are going to move one more time to extend, and I will let Meg say the exact.
The updated and correct language for this motion, a motion to extend interim superintendent Maureen Beninda's term through the 2024-2025 school year, pending approval of waiver from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
A second.
Thank you, Linda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.